Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Minneapolis Planning Commission for June 2, 2025. My name is Chris Meyer and I'm Chair of the Commission. At this time, I will ask the Clerk to take the role.
Commissioner Baxley is absent. Campbell is not, no longer on the Commission. Chodry, I thought I saw her. She is absent. Okay, she is absent. Conley, present. Gordon?
Present.
Jones?
Present.
Meyer?
Here.
Shefty is absent. Thompson is absent. Wagner?
Here.
We have five members present.
Let the record show we have a quorum. We have two minutes to approve from May 12 and May 15, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, those minutes are adopted. Next, we will organize the agenda. We have two items that will not have any public hearing, items number four and five. For the rest of them, I'm going to go through each one of them. Staff is recommending all of them to be on the consent agenda. If you would like to speak against the staff recommendation, or if you have other comments on it, we can pull that from the consent agenda. And if you want to do that, when I raise your hand, when I call on that one, there will be an opportunity if you wanted to speak in favor on something when we go through the consent hearing. So first, we have item number six, 3120 Washburn Avenue North. Was anyone here to speak against the staff recommendation for item number six? Okay. So we will discuss item number six. Item number seven, 3120 Washburn Avenue North. Was anyone here to speak against item number seven? That one as well? Yeah, I think they're tied. I heard that they're similar. And then, so we'll discuss number seven. And item number eight, 5005 Lyndale Avenue South. Was anyone here to speak against the staff recommendation on that one? Okay. So we will discuss items six, seven, and eight. All right, is there a motion to approve that agenda?
So moved.
So a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is adopted. All right, so first, we'll go to our consent agenda, items number four and five. Did anyone have any discussion or question or request a presentation on either one of them? All right, is there a motion to approve those consent items?
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? All right, so items four and five are adopted. So we'll now move to public hearing on item number six. And staff is Hillary Dvorak. And can we do seven at the same time? Was that? Work procedurally? Okay. Your mic's not on yet.
Oh.
There we go.
Thank you. I can't see and I can't hear, obviously. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Hillary Dvorak. I'm a planner and I'm here to present items six and seven. And I will do my best to keep them together. I'll concentrate on the apartment first and then I'll move to the parking lot. So this is a project at 3120 Washburn Avenue North. It is located on the, the development site is located on the southeast corner of Washburn and Lowery Avenue North. And the property is occupied by the Parkway United Church of Christ Building. However, this building has been vacant for five years. And the development site also includes the property located on the southwest corner of Vincent Avenue North and Lowery Avenue North with the same address, which is occupied by an 81 space surface parking lot. There is a 60-foot telecommunication tower with associated base equipment located in the parking lot. And there's a partial public alley that starts at Lowery and goes midway through the block. It accesses the subject property and then three single-family homes located along Washburn Avenue North. And there are no other properties that access that. Currently, these properties are tied together, which is why you have one address for two different properties and two different streets. They're tied together for tax purposes. So as part of this project, the applicant will be untying the properties through a process, a tax parcel division process with the city and Hennepin County. And that will happen after their entitlement procedures are complete. The site is, excuse me. The site is surrounded by low-density residential, institutional uses, and small-scale commercial. The small-scale commercial is concentrated along Lowery and also West Broadway in this neighborhood. Both of those streets are goods and services corridors. And the site is in the Willard Hay neighborhood of Minneapolis. The Metropolitan Council is currently studying the Metro Blue Line Extension Light Rail Project, which is, would be located over in this location. So it's, it's in the midst of being studied. So I'm just, it's just a fact about the, about the area. So the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing church and construct a six-story, 60-unit residential building on the site. There would be amenities within the building, including co-working spaces, a fitness center, a cumy room. There's outdoor children's play area and outdoor gardening space. There will be a mixture of one to four bedroom units within the building. The project is required to do a travel demand management plan with four points. They are going to be providing one unlimited ride transit pass per dwelling unit. And that strategy that they selected is worth six points, so they do meet the requirements for the minor TDMP. There are three variances that are required for this project. There's a front yard setback variance along Washburn Avenue North, and I'm going to just point these out. So this is, north is up on your screen. This is Washburn Avenue North. The front yard setback here is 15 feet. They're proposing to go to two feet. There is a variance along Lowery Avenue North. The required setback is 10 feet. They're proposing to go to four. And the setback along the alley is 11 feet. This part of the building, the northern portion of the building, is three feet from the alley. And this portion of the building is 10 and a half. There is no variance from the south side. They are meeting that setback. So three yard variances in site plan review are the applications that are required for the site. We are recommending approval of all of the applications. And for the variances, I will generally speak to them together. As of, after reading the report, you can see that the findings are the same for the, for the setback variances. There are challenges that exist on this property. There's an unusually deep front boulevard along Washburn Avenue North, which is 50 feet deep. That is very unusual. There is a curved and larger-than-usual boulevard along Lowery Avenue North. It goes from four feet up to 12 feet. There is significant grading on the site from north to south. So from Lowery, as you're heading south to that south property line, the site rises about 10 feet in elevation. And the grading of the site is tied to the grading of the alley. And this is that grading plan. You can see through here that we have some, you know, the site is relatively flat along Lowery and then comes uphill, if you will, goes upgrade. And so you can see the contour lines, that this is a significant slope coming up that alley. And so to keep the alley, to maintain the grades in the alley, they are proposing two retaining walls along the south side and then a retaining wall along the east side, which will help maintain those grades in the alley. And those are the unique circumstances for the variances. Sorry, I'm going to just come down here and sit. I would say that also the grade change for the front property line, the house to the south sits, with the grade changes on the site, this house sits approximately 10 feet higher than the first-floor elevation of the proposed building, which will provide adequate separation between those two uses. For the corner side yard setback, for the, for the same unique circumstances, it is the grade changes that occur on the site and in the alley and maintaining those, maintaining the grades of the alley to access those homes to the south. In addition, if Lowery Avenue is a goods and services corridor, if this was the front yard setback, the required front yard setback would be zero feet. And so to maintain that street edge along Lowery, we are recommending approval of that along with the grading situation. And the same is true for the setback along the alley where it is going from 11 feet down to three. The proposed building in any of the yard situations will not impede light and air and access to open space for any of the surrounding properties. In addition, along Lowery Avenue, this is the only building on the site, or on the block face, I should say, between Vincent and Washburn Avenue North. So those are the three variances for that. There is a front yard variance that is needed for the parking lot from 15 feet down to seven feet along Vincent Avenue North. The parking lot is currently three feet from the front property line. They are moving it down back to seven, excuse me. There's currently 81 spaces in this parking lot. They're revising it and it's going down to 56. A lot of the parking stall losses along this row, along the alley, closest to the rear property line, where they're going to be retaining those grades. And so instead of removing, excuse me, instead of retaining the parking that's there, they're going to be building a retaining wall and then maintaining those grades. And so we are recommending approval of the variance along Vincent. And again, that variance is for item number seven. In terms of site plan review for the building, the building meets almost all of the site plan review standards, except for two. They do not have an off-street parking space provided on this site. They are developing the parking lot on the west side of the alley, or excuse me, the east side of the alley for the building. And so we are recommending that you grant alternative compliance to not require an off-street parking space on the housing site. And the other area that needs alternative compliance is they don't have any, there are no on-site canopy trees proposed. They are proposing to have four canopy trees in the right-of-way. I'm sorry, I'm going in the wrong direction. Four canopy trees in the right-of-way. And so we are recommending that you grant alternative compliance. There are two, under the site plan review approvals for item six for the residential, there are several standard conditions of approval. I will just point out that there are two, or there is one additional condition. They do, they did submit a lighting plan and the foot candle limits exceed what is allowed by the code. And so we are asking them to revise the lighting plan to not prevent, or to not, to prevent glare, excuse me, from passing on to the surrounding properties. And then for the parking lot, I can stand this. Sorry. For the parking lot, it needed a conditional use permit. Parking lots serving residential uses require the conditional use permit. This has been a parking lot serving an institutional use for, since the 1960s. So we do not find that a parking lot in this location that would be continuing would be injurious to the surroundings. And we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit and the variance for that setback along Vincent from the 15 down to seven. And the other application that is needed for the parking lot is site plan review. And for this application, there are several areas that need alternative compliance and not all we are recommending. Two are dealing with the same situation where they are required to have 15 canopy trees on the site. They have 11. They're proposing four canopy trees in the right-of-way along Vincent. There are underground stormwater pipes that run in this area, which is connecting to this underground stormwater system that goes out to the, to the pipes in the street. Excuse me. So there are pipes here. And so we are recommending that you grant alternative compliance to allow these for trees in the boulevard. However, along the south property line, the applicant is only proposing these two trees. There is a row of arborvitae in this location adjacent to this house. And then three trees that will remain. They are proposing two additional trees. We are not granting alternative compliance to eliminate the six-foot, 95% opaque screening entirely. However, we are recommending partial alternative compliance, but we are asking for a screening that is three feet in height and 60% opaque here along the front between the row of arborvitae that sit in here. And then, so landscape from midpoint, if you will, to Vincent. The other items that needs alternative compliance in the same vein is along the southwest side of the property is the six-foot high screening that is 95% opaque. As you can see in here, there is an alley easement that comes out that allows these homes to turn around in this location. And there is some landscaping on this hill that will stay. But we are recommending that we're adjacent to these three single-family homes, that they do provide that screening that is three feet high and 60% opaque. The one other area that is not being met in site plan review is distance to trees. There is a space in this area that has a handful of parking spaces that are not located within 50 feet of one of these perimeter trees. So one additional tree will need to be put somewhere in this location to achieve that spacing of one tree for every, within 50 feet of every space, or every space within 50 feet of every tree, excuse me. So with those conditions, we are recommending approval.
Thank you, Hillary. Are there any questions for staff before we move on to the public hearing?
I have one. How many projects have we had that have chosen to take on the full six points by getting the transit pass for their TDMP requirement? Doesn't seem like it's been very many, but I'm wondering.
I, Chair Meyer, I cannot think of any that I've actually worked on personally that have any. So I'd have to look to Kimberly.
We are tracking that somewhere, but not in my head. So I would have to look it up and get back to you.
Okay. My memory isn't-
But again, maybe one other.
I was going to say, my memory isn't perfect, but this is the first one that I remember. So I think that's cool that we're, we're seeing that happen. All right, I will open the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Great. So since these are, you know, two adjacent properties, you know, people can testify to both. They've both, you know, been put on the discuss, the discussion agenda. But if you want to speak to both at this time, you can. So can we have the applicant come and present with? So you can discuss both items six and seven, so you don't have to come up again.
Hello, I'm David Witt with Mobilized Design and Architecture, applicant for the project, working for Premier Housing as the developer on this project. Hillary's done a fantastic job presenting this project. I really don't have anything to add at this point, other than being available for questions or follow-up at this point, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else that wants to speak, you can just come on up. How many of you would like to speak to this item? Just raise your hand.
Can you say that again?
How many would like to speak? Just so I have an idea. Two people? Okay, so you can, three? Did I miss one? Okay, you can come on up, tell us your name and address for the record, and tell us your testimony.
My name is Mary Randa, and I live at 3514 Vincent Avenue North. And I'm here today because this modern, huge warehouse, concrete and metal clad, warehouse-looking building will indeed alter the essential character of the locality, its safety, and enjoyment. There are no buildings of this height in proximity, except on the North Memorial Campus. It's not in keeping with the 1920s, '30s architecture of the surrounding homes and businesses. The church is about three stories at its peak. Why has a larger building not been built on this site before? Is it due to the high water table? How will this building be guaranteed to not lean, buckle, or crack due to hydrostatic pressure, which we know is present in this area? A three-story building or townhomes would be better suited to the neighborhood. The architect has stated that the building is designed for 180 to 200 people. Why is this project tasked with such an intensive density increase? It has a population of a small town without additional police protection. The location could not be farther from the fourth precinct. Premier has stated that it will not be providing 24/7 coverage by staff and security. They have not managed a vacant building well. How will this building, its residents, and the neighbors be safe? Will a police substation be needed? While a parking lot will be provided, what is keeping residents and their guests from parking on the street? Traffic on Lowery is busy and is a safety concern now. The alley is a dead end with a steep grade and is perilous, so perilous, that waste collection is often interrupted due to icy conditions. The current residents must use the Lowery Avenue entrance. If the setback is reduced from 10 to four feet, cars leaving the alley will need to pull out much farther on the busy street to exit and deal with the pedestrian traffic in the alley from the building. The alley should be improved at Premier expense, not homeowners. Please do not approve this project as it currently is.
Thank you. Next testifier? Tell us your name and address for the record.
Very nervous. My name is Angel Wisby. I'm at 3104 Washburn Avenue North. So I'm located on the block. I'm at the dead end of the alley, the house on the very dead end. I have a few concerns and questions regarding the, the reducing of the land. One, I'm not sure if they're, they're going to reduce the front and the back of just that property or the entire block. I was also wondering, for the record, I'm very against this entire project just because of a lot of the things that other neighbors have already bought up. And the fact that, again, when we, there is no turnaround at that dead end. You can only go up and back down. There's, so I worry because in the wintertime, a lot of the times, it's icy and we slide down that. And if that's the back entryway of that apartment, we could hit a child, we could hit a person, we could hit another car. That's a concern we have. Another concern with the parking on the street, we already have people parking from the hospital that, that take up our parking, so we don't have very much parking as it is. We can't really park too much in the back because of how narrow the alley already is. So if we have not enough parking spaces for that, as many units as we have, plus if they have guests, they're taking up our parking also. So we have, sorry. I also don't really understand the retaining walls and how that will affect the homeowners that live on that block. We just have a lot of questions that we don't feel like we have answers to. So I, too, am asking that this project doesn't move forward.
Thank you for your testimony. Next testifier?
Hi, I'm Tracy Borgeson. I live on 3227 Washburn, across the street from Lowery for this project. You know, I support new community buildings, but I don't understand why it has to be six stories high. I think, as Mary mentioned, it does not fit the aesthetic of the neighborhood. I am concerned about everything that is going on in that block. They're, we're also dealing with them talking about putting the light rail through at that very location. It's going to be very congested, very, very confusing. I don't support this project as is. I agree with everything these beautiful ladies have said. I also would like you to not approve the project as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify to this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Hillary, can you clarify, so do the setbacks, they don't apply on the full block front, do they? To respond to the testifier's question?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Oh, they asked if the setback was for just the property for, for this item for number six, or if it was for the whole block front?
Just for this property, for the front yard setback on, the front yard setback on Washburn, because this is a corridor built form. It has a 15-foot front yard setback.
Right. So, so the west side is the front yard.
This is the front.
So I don't know if the testifier thought that the north side was the front one, but are the setbacks the same on that whole front as well?
The front, the required front back here along Washburn is 15. The required setback along Lowery is 10.
And with our, with the proposed variances, what would it be?
The request here is 15 to two, and here it's 15 to, oh my gosh, now I'm getting confused. 15 to two on Washburn, 10 to four on Lowery, 11 to three along the alley.
But on the other half of Lowery, the parking lot side?
The parking lot side, no. The only, I can tell you what they are. The only yards that are not being met is along Vincent, which is 15 down to five, seven. Sorry, way too many numbers. On the parking lot, the rear, the south, let me just get to it. Yes, the corner side yard setback along Lowery here is eight feet. And they are at 13 and a half. The interior side yard setback here on the south is five, and they're at 18 and a half. And their rear yard is five, and the parking lot is 31. So the only yard that's not being met for the parking lot is along Vincent.
Okay, so the setback is going to be longer on the east side of this block? Right?
It's going to be longer. These setbacks only apply to these properties. I think I'm missing something. I'm sorry, Chair Meyer.
Kimberly, did you have anything on that?
No, I had a question from Commissioner Jones about the building height. And that's not something that requires any action by the planning commission.
That was also something I was going to ask, just to clarify for the, for the testifiers, that-
The built form district is corridor six, which as of right allows six-story buildings. And so that is what is being proposed, and that is what is before you.
And then the last clarified question I have is just, do you have any comments on the retaining wall? A testifier brought it up, and I don't know if it's applicable to any of our variances we're considering, but.
There are no variances needed for the retaining wall. The retaining walls are just needed to retain the grade. Both.
Commissioner Jones?
Hillary, I had a question about, a concern about the dead-end alley and some of the congestion that's caused by that, that and the grade and stuff. I actually have a dead-end alley that I'm belonging, that's in my community too. And it's a really pain when people try to turn around in it. And I just wondered if there's any mitigating factors or things that Public Works can do to help alleviate that concern.
There are only three single-family homes that will have access to use the alley for actual parking. This development will no longer have access. Currently, you can get into the parking lot from the alley, but that will be turned, ah, turned off. That will be removed. I'm trying to figure out which site plan works the best to show you guys this. And, um, so there are, there are just three single-family homes here. One garage, one, two, three garages that use the alley. There, the existing alley has this, like, turnaround area, if you will. There's for, for these homes to turn around. And then what this development is proposing is down here at the end of the alley, before you get to Lowery, on the parking lot side, is there is a space for when the garbage trucks come up the alley, that they can come back down, turn around, and then go out. This alley exists as a dead end now. And so this is not worsening the situation in the alley. In fact, it might be better because there will no longer be vehicular access to the alley for this parking lot. The only maneuvering element- The only maneuvering element that this project is proposing in the alley is this turnaround area for those, for the garbage to come back.
And we don't have any jurisdiction over it.
That is correct.
There's nothing that we can do on that. So that is something for me to clarify to the public is, you know, our role is just to review the zoning requests. We don't have any control over Public Works and the roads. And as we said before, this is corridor 6, so by right, they can build a six-story building. So the things that we have to review are three sets of variances regarding the setbacks, and then the site plan review, and the conditions associated with that. Are there any comments or motions from commissioners? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, Chair Meyer. Thank you, Hillary, for the presentation, and thank you to the neighbors for coming out. It's always good to get involved in the process. I think it's been mentioned many times now, but we are here voting on the variances specifically and not whether a six-story building should be allowed in this location. It's allowed by right as the built form corridor 6 code states. In regard to the variances, I think they make sense. I think it will outline well by staff. So, for example, on the western edge of the property, there is that large boulevard between the street and the building, or where the proposed building is. So it makes sense that we're reducing, to me, it makes sense that we're reducing that setback, given the unique circumstances for the property. So overall, I think it's a great building. I think that the, I particularly like to see the three- and four-bedroom units in an apartment building. We don't see many of those. There's been a ton of studios and one-bedrooms developed throughout our city over the last five years, and to see a new building with family units is really great. I'm not sure if other commissioners have comments, but I'd be happy to make a motion as well if we're ready for that.
Let's take your motions. We can have.
I'll make a motion. Do we need to do six and seven separately, or can we do it?
Yeah, we do have to.
I'll make a motion to approve item 6 and adopt staff findings.
There's a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Conley?
Just a comment. I, again, we, it's been mentioned, we have a job to do that involves whether or not these variances are met, and I support what the staff recommendation is. But I do want to just recommend that the project team do some sort of open house for residents, be good neighbors with the community. Community engagement is always important to answer some of these pressing questions like the alley and access, et cetera. Turns out, the parking lot won't be accessible by the alley, so that eliminates some concern there. But just as we move forward with the vote, just some open houses as you continue through the development process would be, I think, important for the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree with that. If that, if the turnaround is a problem, then it's a problem for the applicant as well, right? So it makes sense for them to work that out. I will also support this motion. I think the proposed variance findings are met with the grading and the large boulevard. And just to the project overall, I agree with Commissioner Wagner. It's really great to see three- and four-bedroom units. We don't get many of those. And to have them close to one of our best parks and transit stations is really great. And I'm really excited to see applicants take advantage of the TDMP option of providing free transit passes to their residents. I know that doesn't solve all the parking problems, but it does help, and I appreciate them being willing to do that. All right, are there any other comments? All right, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Thompson is not here. Wagner?
Aye.
And Chair Meyer?
Aye.
That's five yays and, or five ayes and zero nays.
And that is adopted. All right, so for item number seven, I'm not going to turn to a staff report unless anyone wants to, but I will, are you coming? But I will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak specifically to item number seven, which is the east side of the block with parking lot, you can do so now. Did anyone want to speak to this one? Okay, go ahead. You can come up to the microphone.
I guess, I guess I don't understand this. There is part of this, when I read my introduction, that the harm and the integrity of projects with regard to what I'm assuming is the zoning statement. What I read is, is really interference with the health, safety, and happiness of residents. All of this looks, fits really neatly and nicely on paper, but if you were from that neighborhood, if this were in your block, you would not like this, and it's going to be a big logistical mess. And my guess is that the people who are living at the top of the alley and on Wash, Vincent, are really seriously considering moving, and that the people who are living in this building will probably feel warehoused, and that they will feel their life is in danger when they come from the building across the alley into the parking lot. So this is creating kind of a disaster scenario. Even to say, to okay the variance from 10 feet to 4 feet at the front of the building, imagine your drive, you just made it down the alley safely. You didn't hit anyone, you didn't slide down like a luge course, and now you have to turn left or right onto Lowry Avenue, and now you have a sidewalks width to be able to peer out. If your car is not a smart car, you're going to have to poke your bumper out into the street to be able to see if there's any cars coming. And that just is not safe. This is, you know, sounds good, looks good. Let's manipulate this, that, and the other thing on paper, but in real life, this does not work.
Thank you for your testimony. Did anyone else want to testify? Come up again.
I also would like to bring up the parking lot situation, just because, living there, I know what I've gone through every winter, and I know that my garage is the dead end. There is nowhere to turn around, nowhere. The only thing you can do is, if you back up and it's a steep hill, you can come down facing forward. But if you go up, especially in the wintertime, there's no backing up. You have to go up and then you back down. There's no way to turn around. It would be great, because it would be safe for us, but we have to back down. And if you, the way we back down, we back down and then we pull into that parking lot, because if we can't just back straight down and go right into Lowry, that is a very busy street. We wouldn't be able to see anything. But if you block that parking lot as well, and you have to worry about people coming from that back door to take out their garbage, use the playground that they're putting back there, go to the parking lot, like, I seriously worry about hitting a child. I mean, adult, anybody, but, I mean, that's a, that's a huge fact for me. And I feel like, in this statement, they said something about 71 spaces for parking lot, but then, as she was speaking, she said 56 parking spaces. I'm kind of wondering which, how many spaces that is as well, because, again, we worry about the street parking on both Vincent and Washburn because of this. We have a family of six, so we have three vehicles, you know? So it's like, we can put one in the back, but then two have to go on the street. You know, I know that's not everyone's problem, but right now, we have four homes on that block, and we have, like, 20 people that live on that block. We're going up to 200-plus people. It's just, it's very congested. I really worry about the parking lot, because I really worry about the alley. And I was wondering if doing the grading and everything to meet the things for the parking lot, would that narrow the alley even more? I'm not, I'm not really clear on that. Does anybody know that?
No.
No? Okay. So those are my concerns. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to respond to, oh, sorry, did anyone else want to speak to this item? Item number seven. All right, I will close the public hearing for item number seven. Hillary, just to answer those questions, it is 56 parking spots in this proposed lot, correct?
Correct. There may be some references in the packets from 71, but it is 56. They had submitted it. It was a 71 space. I wrote the incomplete letters. They went back and revised things based on those letters, and then they went from 80, 71 to 56.
And, you know, thank you, Hillary. To respond to the testimony, as we said, you know, I think the ability to turn around is a relevant concern. It's not one that we can address today. That's Public Works, that controls the road, and that would not be, we would not be narrowing the alley with this proposal. I think the setback findings for this one are justified as well, so I will be supporting item number seven as well. Did any commissioners have a motion or comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, Chair Meyer. Just to expand on your comment in regards to turning around, it seems to me that the plans address this head-on with the turnaround for the trash trucks. It seems like residents will be able to use that as well. If my understanding there is incorrect, someone, please let me know. But with that in mind and that comment on the record, I will move staff, I will move to adopt staff findings as it relates to item number seven.
There's a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? All right, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
And Chair Meyer?
Aye.
That's five ayes and zero nays.
That motion is adopted. Good luck with your project. All right, now moving on to item number eight, 5005 Lyndale Avenue South. Mic's not on, Mayling.
Go down here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Now we can hear you.
All right. Hello, commissioners, I'm Mayling Smith, and I am presenting 5005 Lyndale Avenue South. So this is a project that you've seen twice before, and most recently, you saw it last fall, and this was approved. I'll get into the details in a second, but this is located at the corner of 50th Street West and Lyndale Avenue South in the UN 3 and corridor 4 built form Overly District. This is a four-story residential building with 20 dwelling units, and the applications that have been approved are for a variance to allow the building within the reverse-corner setback requirement along 50th Street, where there's a 31-foot requirement, and the building is setback 15 feet. And the site plan review was also approved. The request today is for an electrical transformer that would be located in the northeast corner of the site. And so this is reducing two setbacks, both the reverse-corner front yard that I was referencing just now, and also the rear yard requirement along the east property line. This is just a summary, if we want to look at it, but this is an unusual site in that it has two front yards, so one along the west and one along the north. And that also makes it have two rear yards as well. This is a diagram showing where that reverse-corner front yard requirement applies. It applies for the first 25 feet away from the east property line, which is shared with the neighbor to the east. And the red area is the setback requirement. That's not where the transformer, or the transformer would be located in this area of the site, and I'll have a site plan showing that. So the transformer would be set back 5 feet from the front property line along 50th and 2 feet from the east property line. The variance findings that are in staff report talk about how the applicant began this project three years ago, and due to several delays, there have been changes in Excel's requirements since the beginning of the project design. And so now that those, now that they are in conversations again with Excel for the final permitting, they're discovering that all of the electrical codes are preventing them from placing the transformer where they originally wanted to in a pole-mounted form, and so now this has to be a ground-mounted transformer. This is an unusual site, as I already referenced, but also it's not adjacent to an alley, so that further limits how Excel can access their transformer. So because it's not adjacent to an alley and because you've got yards on all sides of the building, it really limits where you could put an electrical transformer that meets electrical codes and also the Excel requirements. The applicant is proposing to screen the transformer on all four sides through vegetation, with vegetation. The equipment itself would be no more than 4 feet tall, and we're recommending a condition of approval that all of the screening would be at least 60% opaque and be kept in a state of good repair and maintenance, and that's required by the zoning code. And this is the screening materials that the applicant is proposing, so it'd be Korean feather reed grass on all four sides, as well as more of a hedge along the backside. And so with that, I am able to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff before we open the hearing? Not seeing any, so I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here to speak to this item? Welcome, and tell us quickly about the variance requests.
Good afternoon. My name is Todd Smith, and I'm representing Master Properties. When we got this entitled in 2023, our understanding from Excel Energy was it could be on the pole located on the other side of 50th Street. That's where the power comes from. There's a vacated alley. When we got it entitled the second time, we found out, as we were getting ready to start construction, that that didn't work any longer. Excel has been great. Staff has been great. We've been on-site. We met with senior engineers. We've walked the whole yard on where this could be placed. It's really hard to do, and it's challenging that it's not really a choice that the city doesn't get to make or staff doesn't get to make. It's really like Excel saying this is what it's going to be in because of the circumstances unique to this site. That's where it ended up being placed. Does anyone have any questions?
Are there any questions for the applicant? Not seeing any, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, how many people did we want to have testify? Raise your hand if you wanted to testify to this. Okay, just you? So go ahead and come up to the microphone, tell us your name and address. You can proceed.
My name is Lori Helly, and I live at 5005 Aldrich, so I'm right across the way from the site. And hearing the last request for variances, I feel like there's really no point in my even testifying. And I'm just, I wonder who is, who is in charge of determining whether a building is, adds to the, adds to the neighborhood, adds to, you know, the people that are already living there? I mean, I just, I just can't believe that you don't have any authority to veto what's, you know, I mean, the last people that were up here. I just, I just, I don't know. I'm just disgusted by the whole process. And there's no, you know, I live on 50th, I live on Aldrich, and there's no parking for that building. Garfield, there's not, you can't get through Garfield in the winter, and it's pretty much tough to get through even in the summer. And we're on, Lyndale, there's not parking on Lyndale. We're on Aldrich, and we have a lot of restaurants, and so in the evening, you can't park on our street. So, and I know they're going to have underground parking, and I don't, I just, there's, there's four schools that access that corner, and it's a very dangerous corner. And now, we're going to have kids walking and, in a, with a building that takes away all the visibility. So it just doesn't seem to me like there's any point in having this conversation, as you've approved. You're just going to approve it.
Thank you for your testimony. Did anyone else want to testify to this item? Not seeing any, so I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I did want to just say the same comment, is that this committee isn't here to talk about, like, the actual project or the site, the height of the building or the building itself, but again, the variance is.
So I'll respond to that a little bit. So first of all, I mean, this project previously came to the planning commission, and those approvals were already given. So if you're asking who has the right to revoke those approvals, it's no one. Those are approved, they are entitled to them. Now they're asking for something new, so the only. So the only item within our authority today is to approve or deny the setback variance related to this electrical transformer. We could deny that and force them to put it somewhere else, but we have no authority to revoke the applications that have already been approved. More broadly speaking, so that this is a unique circumstance where there was a project that already got approvals, or broadly speaking, the answer to your question for other projects would be the city council, especially when they adopt the 2040 plan. When we proceed to the 2050 plan, which will be five or six years from now when they approve that, then we'll go through this process as a city again. All right, so speaking specifically to this item, I feel this is a very reasonable request to accommodate the transformer and make it easier for Excel. So I will support this application. Did anyone want to make a motion, or have any comments?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
We have five ayes and zero nays.
That is adopted. Good luck with your project. Lastly, we have a resolution to honor the outgoing commissioner, Joe Campbell. So I'm going to read the resolution that we have for him. A resolution of appreciation for Joe Campbell for his dedicated service to the Minneapolis City Planning Commission, whereas Joe has served on the City of Minneapolis Planning Commission since 2022, and whereas Joe has participated in over 50 planning commission hearings, making decisions and recommendations on over 1,529 land use applications, and adoption of one comprehensive plan, and numerous zoning code Texas amendments. And whereas Joe has provided substantial expertise related to planning and development, and whereas Joe served on the planning commission on its 100th anniversary, and whereas Joe has demonstrated tremendous dedication and generosity in sharing both his time and knowledge, and whereas the Minneapolis City Planning Commission wishes to formally recognize Joe's dedicated service to the City Planning Commission and city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Planning Commission and the staff to the City Planning Commission of the City of Minneapolis, that we thank Joe Campbell for his faithful and constructive service in extending the progress of this city, and in promoting the welfare of its people, and that we extend our best wishes and good health and happiness, trusting that the friendships and understanding built in our mutual undertakings will be with us always. So thank you, Joe Campbell. With that, I guess, we'll move to vote. Is there a motion to approve that resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. That is adopted. With that, that concludes our business for the day. Our next, next meeting of the regular planning commission is June 16th, and we have committee of the whole this Thursday, June 5th. Are there any updates from staff or commissioners?
The only update was, I was just going to remind you that we do have two items at committee of the whole this week, so we have one item related to click, and then a project discussion. So look forward to seeing you all on Thursday.
See everyone Thursday. We are adjourned, thank you.